Hey, you actually made it to this meeting.
All right, let's go.
How are you, sir?
Order by saying the Judge of the Wages.
The Judge of the Wages is in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God and invisible, delivering justice for all.
They're not on, I don't have to care. All right. We're good. All right, so, uh, the mayor is out of commission tonight, so I will be acting mayor. Mike is stranded somewhere between here and North Dakota, so we have kind of a small council meeting members tonight. What do we got to do? Approve the minutes from the last couple meetings, so we have truth and taxation hearing minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Can I second that? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Minutes for that meeting are carried, are approved, and it's from the public hearing, and that one was the ordinance change for the two to eliminate the option of a two-way liquor license. And can we have an approval of those?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
And I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eric?
Aye, aye, approve. I make a motion for the minutes for the December 12th regular council meeting minutes.
Okay.
And I will second that.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right, any additions or corrections here to the, uh?
Yes, I added the purchase agreement for parcel ID number four-two-zero-zero-eight-five-one-zero-nine. It's approval of agreement between the seller and the city.
Okay, amnesty, they're printed out one, you did.
Yep, it's an update number.
Okay. Any other additions, or is there anything we need to table or delete without the mayor and Mike here? Or can we do all the rest of this?
I think we can do the rest of it.
Okay. I make a motion, we go ahead and approve the agenda for tonight.
I second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right, uh, Jason?
Sure.
Come on up. We're talking about the Tiff District one-dash-seven.
Yeah, it's a new meeting, council. Just a simple item for you here tonight is the decertification of one-dash-seven. Basically, Tiff statute requires that once all obligations in a district has been, have been met and paid, you must move forward to decertifying. This, this Tiff one-dash-seven, we had an agreement with Harmony House on some housing improvements. Uh, they went forward, made those improvements, the city paid them as in accordance with that, and now that obligation's been paid in full, the Tiff notice is, uh, is paid in full, and now it's time to, uh, to return some funds to the county and decertify this Tiff district. Now, with the, with the, uh, funds returned to the county, the, the protocol, the requirement under Tiff is that those funds then be reimbursed because they're collected on behalf of all the local units. So, anything left in a Tiff fund balance at, at decertification will go back to the county then and redistributed. So, out of that fifty-three thousand, uh, the city, we estimate that city received between nineteen and twenty thousand dollars back. Now, in the, in the lack of a better term, uh, those are cleared of its Tiff, it's, it's, has no longer ties to Tiff. That twenty thousand can replace your general fund or a fund of, of your discretion to help, uh, help with the economic development, help with any general fund expenditures. So, uh, those funds are returned to you without any strings attached. So, uh, overall, the, the Tiff district's performing very well. A year, a few years back, you, you took out, uh, some bonds using some increment, and so on several of your Tiff districts, you're just paying yourself back over time for that, uh, for those bond payments, and performing very well. You're going to see some bonds come off, or, excuse me, some, uh, districts come off the, probably over the next two to three years, you'll see one or two homeless, maybe three, three come off, one per year, as we pay off those obligations, and that obligation is, is the city itself when it funded the money to pay off some of these bonds. So, the district's performing very well. You've got a newer one now with, uh, with Sanford, and so that one, you'll start seeing some activity here in a couple of years for that, but that was set up to help reimburse your EDA for, uh, some of the cleaning costs associated with that, so. General resolution, when we decertify, we've got a resolution, uh, that is sent to the county along with a form that, uh, uh, highlights the requirements and, uh, and that of the decertification. We'll send those to, the resolution and the form to the county along with a check, and then those should come back to you within a reasonable time, the funds should come back to you within a reasonable time period. So, with that, council, if you've got any questions, feel free. Otherwise, uh, there should be, just need a motion on the resolution.
Do you have the resolution in front of you? Do you want to read that?
I do.
Or hard copy might be.
And we're gonna make our, we're gonna make our statement.
All right, good.
I made a bigger. Whereas on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and six, the city appears created its tax increment financing district number one-dash-seven within its municipal development district number one, the project. And whereas, as of the date hereof, all bonds and obligations to which tax increment from the district have been pledged, have been paid in full or defeased, and all their, all other costs of the project have been paid. And whereas, the city desires by this resolution to cause the decertification of the district, after which all property taxes generated within the district will be distributed in the same manner as all other property taxes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, that the city staff shall take such action as is necessary to cause the county auditor, auditor of Morrison County to decertify the district as a tax increment district and to no longer remit tax increment from the district to the city. Dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen.
All right, so you've heard the resolution, any questions, comments?
I'll make the motion, I'll be passive. Decertify it.
Decertify.
Can I second that?
All right, so I have a motion and second to decertify Tiff District seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. And that would be Resolution twelve-twenty-seven-two-zero-one since dash oh-one.
Perfect, thanks, council, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You could send me a copy, but, uh, appreciate it.
Certainly.
Did you want me to stick on for the, I have no rush, do you want me to stick on for the purchase agreement?
If you want, you can, otherwise, yeah, I do.
Sure, sure.
That's great.
All state.
Thank you. All right. So, we have Michael Fox from Humane Society. Come on up.
Hey there.
Thank you for coming. Eric too? Sure, we'll bring Eric up too, because he's the one that's been working on this.
He's the captain of the chair.
There you go. Okay, so you guys have been working together?
Well, our last meeting, it was brought to the table, and you guys wanted to, more discussion, correct? So, what I asked the mayor, so it's either the police commission, that we move forward with the contract, because last year we could be gamble of not having a contract, and last year it was differently, where if we were, we weren't contracted, we could not bring an animal to Humane Society, correct?
Yeah, I know the president in the past had really tried to, um, go away from invoicing and such, and we brought it back more of an incentive to contract with us.
Yep, but on, on this year's contract, there's a, if we don't contract, we still can bring a stray to Humane Society, correct?
If you don't, oh, well, then you will be invoiced, yes. And if, unless you don't agree to be invoiced, then it probably will be back onto your hands again.
But if, say if we don't contract with you, and we want to bring a stray dog to you, will you say no?
Well, that, that is the problem, I guess, with not contracting, is that we had, we're forced to keep stalls open for contractual agreements, um, and anyone who doesn't contract with us, um, we kind of have, like, if there's, we have to have two stalls open, um, for our contracted areas. Now, if we have just two stalls open and a contracted area comes to us with a stray, we'll take it. But if, uh, an area that isn't contracted with us, we can't take it because we have to leave those two stalls open for contracted, contracted areas.
And to me, that makes a big difference then, where, I didn't bring the numbers, I gave Terry when she called me reference the article, but I think it was twelve or thirteen strays.
I think that's what you mean.
Of dogs and two with cats.
Yeah.
And we're finding places, either we gotta sit down and wait for the homeless, uh, either by calling the vets, all that. But to me, I just, we can't be stuck in that dilemma anymore, and I just, it was my opinion that we can move forward with the contract with Humane Society.
And so if we sign the contract with you, sorry, losing the voice, so we sign contract with you, and we pay the contract fee, when Eric or whoever brings a pet in, an animal in, is there an additional twenty-five or fifty dollar fee, or is there no additional fee?
No additional fee whatsoever. But, but however, um, owner surrenders would still, we would still charge an owner for surrendering their animal.
So, but whatever resident brought a stray in?
If a resident brings a stray in, it's totally the same.
Some of the contracts.
Yeah, resident or police.
Why would an owner bring it? Some of them don't want their pets anymore.
They bring their, they bring their own in, and say it's a stray.
Well, yeah, that definitely does happen, yeah.
But, but they get tired with kids, the kids are done with the pets.
I, I thought you meant a resident taking another animal that they've just picked up or found or whatever.
Right, that's what I meant.
Okay.
But then again, I was questioning, why would, if I had a dog, why would I take it to the Humane Society?
Because they're tired of it? Yeah, I mean, um, there are tend to be good reasons as far as, um, you know, moving to an area that they can't allow, or a lot of times, we find that, uh, resident or the owner of the dog is too old and has to go into a system of a facility or something.
Okay. All right.
Those aren't nearly as common as the strays, though. The strays are probably two-one, older.
Are they usually four?
Um, generally, pretty close to. This year, it's been kind of nip and tuck, but we, we've been able to take all of our contracted animals.
Where is the Humane Society in the, um?
It's on the north end, it's kind of, it's right behind City Hall, actually. We almost share that parking lot. Yeah.
What's up? I, I've been watching what other communities are doing, and a lot of communities are going away from Humane Society, though.
Yeah, um, well, this year so far, we've, we've had kind of an influx of contracts, um, but last year was, it wasn't very good. Um, that was the first year I, I came in and I upped the amount, um, from, I think it was a dollar fifty household to three dollars a household, so it did double. But though, that has been, I think, long overdue, in my estimation.
So, that's where the dollar amount comes from?
Yeah, it's, it's from a household, and that, to me, is just the best way to tell the, uh, any area's capacity to own animals or have animals.
And just my, it's my opinion that.
Well, you're the one that ends up dealing with all of the issues, so you're, we have to rely on you, so.
It's my opinion too, and I put in a cover letter that, I mean, paying an officer, even just a small amount of hours over the course of a year would exceed the nineteen-hundred that, that we're asking for in contract. And it would just be one less thing for you to have to worry about, you know? I'm sure you hold on your claim, so.
At times.
Clarifies it, because we were under the standard saying that if we took an award, we still had to pay the thirty-five or the twenty-five or whatever.
Yeah, that was really confusing last year, and I tried to really clear up the language, because they talked about, you know, strays unwanted, lost, the animals, all kind of together, and then they also said surrenders, anyone would pay for it. Well, I just kind of tried to really delineate that more, but just talking about strays and surrenders, and try to keep those separate as much as I can.
But that's where the numbers really have, they've increased, though. I remember five, six years ago, it was, I think if I bought a dog to Humane Society, it was a fifty dollar charge to the city.
Oh, okay, so they were in.
Without a contract, it was.
Yeah, and we were doing that too. Um, the thing last year is, we kind of, we started, instead of invoicing the city, we were trying to charge the individual who brought that animal in, even though it was difficult to charge an individual who just picked up that animal, and now you're charging fifty dollars for doing the right thing. And what was happening is then they wouldn't pay it, and then they would just end up leaving with the animal, and then we left wondering if they just dumped it somewhere, or, you know, moved it to a different area that, that does contract or something, um, or worse, just let it go, or, you know? Uh, we don't want that to happen, so we were kind of biting the bullet into either taking what they could give us, or then calling and reaching out to one of the council members of that area and saying, is it okay if we invoice you? But then we'd have to invoice them for the same amount that we would charge the individual, which is a fifty or seventy-five dollars. But then we came into the problem of when we went to renew our contract, uh, with a jurisdiction, then they wanted to know their intake from the year before, which is totally understandable. But when they counted their intake and said, well, we only had ten dogs or whatever, and had fifty for a dog and seventy-five for a cat, those numbers don't equate to what you're asking in a contract. But we were really eating a lot of cost with those fifty and seventy-five dollar charges. It was just old fees that we didn't think we could increase, because we were just worried about what I said happening, somebody saying, well, I'm not gonna pay that, I'm just gonna go drop this animal somewhere, let it go free.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Can I make the motion that we sign the agreement and go forward?
I do understand it better now. Yes, I second that. All right, motion was made, circuit was made, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Um, so do you want us to sign this tonight, or can she sign it out to you, Michael?
Whatever you prefer, if you'd rather, um, sign it when the mayor's back or whatever, and then mail it back, that would be fine. We're in no rush about it.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in and answering the questions.
Yeah, of course, thanks for having me. Have a good night.
You too. Hey.
Yep, thank you.
Take care.
Um, let's see, oh, it's already got Dave Fisher's name on it, man. Perfect. All right, so we have a local ward of appeals equalization meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May third, at one o'clock at City Hall. Um, I think, does it have to be like two council members, if I remember?
I think so.
And so I think we're gonna have to table this one, only because these two aren't gonna be here anymore. They're retiring, and, um, usually, the mayor's been going, I'm guessing, our two city clerk will probably go. So, I guess I, I think we should just table this till next meeting, so we can be sure that we have the right people going and, um, being at that meeting, if that's okay? Okay. Morrison County sponsorship agreement, it's an approval of an agreement between the city and the county, and that's that trail loop.
Okay, what's that vote? It's, the county wants us to approve this before they can sponsor us for applying for funds for the.
For that grant.
To the grant, yeah.
Well, that's actually gonna probably tie in nicely with our next, um, agenda item. So, is there any, do you guys have a chance to look at this at all, left and? Nothing stood out to me.
Basically, just, you know, just giving them, us signing off, and then give them the permission to, to go through and, and apply for the grants.
And our B.
And the attorney organ and everything's, he can see and just.
And is this one just specific with the city appears? I know at one time, we've been kind of working with Royal Penn and Little Falls or whatever, kind of doing a whole trail system. Is this part of that, or is this just ours?
This is just Morrison County and seventy-nine.
Okay.
Thirty-nine, the north end loop?
Yep. Yeah, the thing that we've been kind of looking at now.
I move to agree to the agreement of the sponsorship agreement between Morrison County and the city appears for the Pierce Loop Trail and water station.
And I'll second that.
A motion and a second to enter the, uh, sponsor, Morrison County sponsorship agreement for the trails, Pierce Loop Trail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right, so the next thing on the agenda, I, uh, on the agenda was this addition, and it is a purchase agreement for a parcel over, um, behind Park Avenue, best known to most of us as the Heemans Property, there's.
South Gulf Course.
South Gulf Course, kind of behind all the properties on the north side of Park, or the, is that?
The two fairway, I guess.
Yeah. And it was the Victor Heemans Property, there's sixty.
Basically sixty-one acres, plus or minus.
Yep.
Waiting for the survey to tell us the exact amount.
And as of today, we officially have the purchase agreement signed by all the appropriate parties of the Heemans family to, um, purchase the property for a grand total of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we have a few things to do yet. With that being said, Don and I have been working with them, Don's done a lot of legwork on this, had some additional hope along the way. We do need to, if there's not an official survey, we're gonna be checking with, uh, their abstract company. If we need to have that property officially surveyed, then that cost will be split between the.
Humans and ourselves.
The humans and ourselves, out of fifty-fifty, and then we'll go ahead with the final closing date. And looking at the purchase agreement, right now, we have a closing date of January third. That date will be amended, uh, pending the purchase agreement, correct?
Yep, it'll be pushed back definitely.
Um, so Nicole has already reached out to Fessler, and she's also gonna check into Larson Abstract, who's, who's done all of their other work for their other property they sold. So, we are hoping here within a month or so, I don't know how fast the wheel spins, it might be two months, but that we will have that property. The city's been working on acquiring this property for quite a long time, and many thanks to Don, many thanks to the Heemans family for moving forward with this, with us, and we got a lot of work to do once it's purchased, to kind of make a plan on how we want to develop it. It is, um, I think originally why we were looking at this property was to do some campground, some trail work to connect up with the Sioux Line Trail and the campgrounds, and the city appears to do some things with the campground and the golf course and a lot of things, but.
A good addition.
But, uh, without having owned the property, we have not come up with a specific business plan or model with it, or however you want to say it, so.
That'll be our next step in the, in the spring.
That will be our next thing on the journey, so with that, I need a motion to approve this purchase agreement.
I approve the purchase agreement between the Heemans Property and the city appears.
I will second it.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So, that motion is carried, um, and like I say, Nicole's already been working on some of the next steps to go with that, and again, thank you to the Heemans family for working with us, and Don's been working hard on it.
You were helping along too, so.
And we, we managed to, we managed to do a good thing, I think, for our grounds and our golf course and our campground, so. All right. They have a two thousand and sixteen property casualty dividend.
And that's just kind of, uh, an FYI, we were receiving some money.
Oh, can I stop one second? Back up, does anybody have, as long as we have Jason here, or does Jason have anything to say about any of the, with that property or anything? I apologize, I kind of messed up.
No problem, um, just, just a couple, I, I'm assuming you're using, uh, cash reserves to make the acquisition?
Now, and there you go, thank you for saying that. That's kind of what we were gonna look at, hopefully at the next meeting, kind of put a plan together between now and then. I know there was some talk in the past about, we have some golf course CDs that have been kind of put aside for that, to look at using some of that money towards it, and then supplementing with a loan out of maybe the electric or general fund.
Okay.
And we're hopefully in the next two weeks come up with a plan for that.
Okay. That was just my, just, uh, my curiosity, I guess, just if, if you're gonna plan on using cash reserves or if you're gonna be borrowing for it, so, um, certainly, that's, that's viable option, I just, I guess for future, just to, you know, the, the parameters around borrowing, we like to see a six-month operating reserve sitting in kind of the cash reserve, so as you, as you move forward with your acquisition and future development plans for it, just kind of keep that in mind as you, the option of using cash versus borrowing and some of that stuff, that, that is, you know, I guess for, for me, the number one thing that I look at when, you know, trying to assist cities is where that operating reserve is at, and that's, a lot of your credit rating agencies will also look at that, so. Um, just to, I guess for me, that's the, the number one thing I usually look at when, when talking with communities about, about major acquisitions, is just protecting that, that operating reserve.
Majority, majority of it will, will be coming out of a fund that was from the golf course already. And it'll just be, it's just a supplement or small supplement that we'll have to take out of somewhere else, and then have the, the golf course over the next several years will pay that money back into that account, so.
Perfect.
It's gonna be fully up on it.
Right, by the golf course.
Sure.
And in the past, when we've talked about the development of it, is that it's not gonna be like an instant development that we're gonna have to do this over a long period of time, so that we aren't taking out major loans and that kind of thing, so that we can, can gradually improve it as we go along.
Sure. And that, and that's other, all offer too, is that we're here to, to help in the conversation around the future development, what resources we can help with the city. Uh, we just got done talking about Tiff and one other thing, so as you look at the development of that property, whether it be housing, commercial, maybe some secondary operations, or some secondary development, uh, to the golf course, feel free to, feel free to bounce ideas and, and have us, that's what we're here for, so. I offer those, uh, we've, we've got a great relationship with the city, and, and that's what we're here for, so. Feel free to bounce those ideas and have us at meetings, whatever, whatever it takes, help guide you in those, those conversations.
Great. And back on that, I can see my brain is a little, we'll hit there, the voice, the brain, it all goes. If you could maybe reach out, I'd give the mayor a couple of days, but I, I was thinking that, um, there should probably be a park board meeting, so that they can officially, not that they don't, are gonna listen to the news, but so that they officially know about it, and that they can be talked to about, you know, like, looking at the plan as far as money coming out of those CDs and that kind of thing. And then I don't know if you want me to talk to, to Toby, or if you want to talk to him, but, uh, when you guys have your next administrative, you know, so.
Yeah, we don't have anything scheduled, that's.
You know, so that, you know, and I, maybe you and Linda can look at and see once what, where the money is or what you have in those reserves.
Before the park board meeting, they have a number two.
Yeah, so, and even if it's, you know, because our next council meeting is until the ninth. I know it's, you've got all the end of year stuff and a lot of other things going on, but you can try and coordinate whatever works for you, okay? I would appreciate that, so.
If it was done before the ninth, it'd be good too, so it could be presented.
Right, if it can, if it can be, but do the best you can with it. And then on that, I know that Donnie, and we can talk about this at the next meeting, but I just want to bring it up. Don is, is retiring from the city council, but he has been an integral part of, of getting this, um, land purchase agreement. I would like to see him, since he's still kind of employed, certified the city as planning and zoning, I'd like to see him see this project out to the end, as far as being involved in the meetings and that kind of thing. And we can talk about that at the next meeting too, but that's kind of what I'm hoping, as long as he's been working on this, that we can keep him involved in it, he won't be a voting member anymore, but he certainly can, I'm hoping, can be involved in it till the end, so.
Maybe he'll go to the park board. Maybe, maybe he might just all step down from the park, or he will.
Well, he won't be a council member anymore, so, you know, we could somehow work on something.
Voting member, it's only the councils that normally vote.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, okay. So, somehow keep you involved in that, if you're okay with that, willing to do that, so.
Hundred percent.
And we can talk about that at next meeting, but I just, those are some of those other things, sorry. Okay, any other things with that land? Okay, now we can go back to.
Back to your FYI.
Now, back to my, that, okay, back to your FYI, cashing property. Thanks, Jason, sorry, should I interrupt them maybe?
No, no problem, no.
Uh, we're receiving, um, an LMCIT dividend for a total of seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, and it looks like we receive something of this nature every, every year, so.
Okay. And that just goes back into the.
Yep, and it, we're just gonna be putting it back into the general fund, and that's kind of just what it seems like we did in the past few years.
Do you know anything about what that one is?
I think it's just from, uh, the League of Minnesota's sure, uh, the city's insurance trust program. It's a pooled program, so when they don't have a lot of claims, they.
They give it back.
They dividend it back out to the cities, and they've been very successful the last few years with their dividend program.
And they said it was a share of twenty-five million, so it's just a little, little piece we got.
Well, there you go. Sweet. Just say thank you. There you go, just smile and go, uh-huh. All right.
Wait, cash the check.
We don't need to make motion or anything, do it, just be aware, okay? All right, slogan contest. Nicole had kind of pushed this project, which was a good project, to get a city appears slogan.
And we set up a, a committee together, and there's members listed below, it was Kyle Bednar, Tom Snooty, Lloyd Boater, I think that's how you pronounce it.
Vader.
Vader.
That's okay.
Josh, Josh Andrea, Maria Andrea, Jim Gerwing, and Carrie Tyson. And there were sixty-four entries. Um, and they narrowed it down to the top three. And these are the top three, it looked like two of them, they made alterations too, that they thought maybe suited it a little bit better, but now it's ultimately up to the council to pick if you guys like these three, or we can, we can be, do another meeting.
I love number one. The alteration. Alternative, whatever.
And they're listed, um, number one was their favorite, number two, and then number three.
What was it then, order two, okay?
Mm-hmm. And I don't know if you want to maybe wait till.
Yeah, we want to wait till next. So, we have everybody here. I don't know, if they're slackers and they choose not to show up, do they get a vote, I mean, you know?
You know, and I did talk to Toby, he said he liked number one.
He did, okay. And then, um, the winner of the slogan, we're giving the fifty.
Pierces bucks.
Cool. Hey, after Christmas. Vote, or you wanna wait for them?
Makes a difference to me.
Let's vote, okay, it's a difference. Alright. Was that your motion, Mary, by the way?
Yeah, welcome to Pierce, where families are raised and memories are made. Do you like the alteration that we have, where families are raised and memories are made?
That's what we, that's the one she picked.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, so, one eight, I have motion for one eight.
And it would say, welcome to Pierce. She wants it with welcome to Pierce. Families are raised and memories are made.
I would second that, I like that one.
A motion and second for the slogan. Welcome to Pierce, where families are raised and memories are made, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. So we get to know who it was?
We get to know who the champion is?
I have all three of the top.
Well, maybe you should total them.
Some of the top three. And you got how many?
There's sixty-four entries, and I think thirty-two different people then, some of them, we have a few more than one, but. Number one was Katie Bozer. Two is Lisa, is it Alveron? And number three was Linda Shabluzki.
Cool, very cool, thank you everybody for your participation in this, and congratulations to Katie Bozer.
Yes.
There we go. Alright, so in your packet, if you will mind, we have two thousand and sixteen NGPA, NJPA board director elections. Looks like they have five people running for those positions, and you have a little quick resume, for lack of better, a little quick blurb on all five of them. Each council member can submit their vote, it's not a group, you know, so go ahead and look at those, and turn those in, and they need them in by, she doesn't say when. I probably get them in at your earliest convenience, I might have said, and you have a separate email, that might stay in there.
If you wanna fill them in, send them to me, then I can return them all.
Okay. Alright.
I suppose they have a right in there, Mary Corf with.
No. Yeah, you pitched us perfectly, there we go. Alright, so we have that, so if you take care of that, that'd be great, and then food shop funds.
Yeah, Mary brought up at the last meeting that the food shop would like a refrigerator and carpet.
And carpet, yes.
Carrie did receive a phone call saying that the Lions Club will donate some money for that.
Oh, sweet. Did they say how much?
My understanding was a thousand or two.
Oh, sweet.
They didn't really specify, but.
Awesome. Cool.
Okay, I was gonna want for you guys to know that, that they did call and say that they're interested in twenty.
Okay, so I'll just have Patty, I think you have estimates already, just give them to the city and go from there.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Alright, it looks like, yeah. The police chief on the agenda tonight, the rest of our department members are not here, anything to add?
Nothing from me.
Nothing?
My report will be submitted next month with the yearly report, so nothing exciting this month.
Alright.
Unless you're just to, we have questions about the Humane Society.
Okay, great. I'll call you back any reports?
Um, it's been kinda busy here, going towards the end of the year, making sure we have everything in order and all that, from what you asked, but nothing too extreme. Carrie's off all week for vacation in Montana, and.
Nothing too extreme. Um, rings off the hook, I was in here this morning.
Yeah, today was a busy day.
Have somebody help me with Carrie?
Um, no, but I thought about maybe calling Pearl and seeing if she can, I know it's the holidays, it's kind of difficult, but I did meet with Bill Palmer, I believe his name is, with Essential Health, and they will be, they're starting to do all that.
They were digging this morning, or Thursday, this afternoon, I guess, so when I saw the diggers, I went, wow!
Yeah.
Cool, wait till it's frozen before you start it.
Yeah, so that's exciting, they're excited to get going with that, and so they're a couple weeks behind, but they're gonna power through, so.
There you go.
They don't have any choice.
Yeah.
That's good.
Well, it's beautiful, fall on record, and they waited till it was frozen.
They must have been behind it, done getting estimates or something.
Yeah, there was something with the, with the lawyers and everything, and we're too, you know. Well, if we have nothing else, I move to Jared.
Oh, I gotta second that, yeah, I got your last one, you're happy. You have the last official one ever, that's it.
This one.
Here you go.
I have a motion to Jordan, heating and heating, all those in favor say aye, everybody say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Alright, I need the purchase agreement, please, yeah, carry.